My forum, waiting on you two. That's teasing.
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
I'm awesome.
It's just us.
It's just you guys. I forgot the food, I'm sorry.
Yeah, have you got one of your surveyors over there?
Yes, two.
What did you get?
One might be you.
That's true.
There were two people. Yeah, it was good.
Did you leave some?
For myself.
Oh, for somebody else.
Oh.
Brewer and the, they, they got that to me, and who was one of the others? Uh, the other one, I think I gave you was, uh, Brewer. Who's telling who worked with Brewer? I think they gave it to Terry maybe? The Terry job, doggy.
I usually know with Brewer because he, yes, because he bought like two different surveyors that passed away. So like the odds are that he may have your file. Well, whenever anybody buys a property and you wanna like survey or you wanted to decide whether or not to subject it out, it's pretty handy if you knew who did the first one. And let's start.
Somebody.
I've logged in, so I need to get on the thing there, in case I need to get on.
All right, it is six o'clock or a little after, I would like to call the board. Your regular planning board meeting for September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We do have a forum, but then they updated to the agenda. And we have the minutes from August twenty-one, everybody will pay with them.
Yes.
As it is, you want a favor?
John, hi.
All right. Okay, we have the, we're keeping open the public hearing for eleven oh five, room twenty-eight, which is the proposed gas station across from Stewart's. And we're keeping it open, uh, because we're waiting for the DUC to give us some information. But if there's anybody in this audience, uh, that knows about the case, you can speak, otherwise we'll close the public hearing. We won't close, we're gonna keep it open.
We're versatile. Nope.
All right, so our first sketch plan review is Joel and Alka, Weber SPO twenty-five dash zero three nine one. And what is the fourth permit, twenty-five dash zero two nine six. My uncle, this is the second sketch plan review. And welcome to the fourth permit application. To convert a residence into a condo venue, X F A, in the Hammond Commercial zoning district located at fifty-seven Mill Hill Road.
And this is Mountain Coos?
No.
Yeah, this is.
The first one, what?
This, this, we, we did it once before, and they came before us, and we had some questions.
Whatever it is. I don't see that you have wetlands on here.
This is behind a humber.
Yes, so it's about, it's been about five months since, since we've seen you guys. We came in for sketch plan review, um, five months ago. Gave you kind of an overview of what was going on, um, and our task was to, um, review with D E C, which we've done.
Mm-hmm, I saw that.
And we downloaded permit for, um.
Disturbance of the wetland level.
Correct. Um, essentially no changes, if. Just trying to improve the system and here we are.
Okay, so the, the news is obviously permitted and it's been approved by, uh, building.
Yeah, we got that today, right?
So, another question to you. Final question, and first question to Alka, so off D E C, they deserve reporting, we're all set on that. In your site plan, you show the parking lot, but you don't show the entrance to the parking lot.
Cur, well, the entrance is through Sunflower.
Right.
So we have an agreement with those folks to use their parking lot as overflow parking and to access our back lot. There's kind of like two portions to it, where the front, where the building is, and then there's the back, where the, where the parking is. And the property has a right of way, um, through the residential neighborhood adjacent to it. But our preference would be not to develop that driveway and to share with Sunflower, um.
Well, so.
So the two issues there are this, um, in order to accommodate your parking and your proposal, we have to have a certain amount of parking. I guess calculations come up with that. The. Those parking spaces, if we put them in your site plan, they're not. They're not on your property. So they could say, yeah, you can use that, but that doesn't help us as a planning board to say that we've provided parking spaces that are guaranteed because Sunflower can sell and, and the next person cannot honor that.
You've gotta get it, now I'm down writing an easement, I guess, right?
So, yeah, well, I mean, it would have to be a permanent.
Yeah.
Which I don't know if that's up to you guys if you can get that. The other option is coming through that.
And then probably file with the county, right, like attached to the. Yes.
Right. So as far as a fifty-foot right of way, it goes through that whole section.
Yeah.
This is.
Unfortunately, what you have to do is to stake out the right of way.
Right.
Because I surveyed it years ago in Rocco. And there were issues that the right of way would go on two people's yards and two houses and stuff. So. I don't know that you can physically drive through that fifty-foot right of way and get to the spot. I think you have to drive.
So are you saying that it's the board's preference that, that we would develop that back right of way and do a driveway?
I'm saying if you wanted to use a fifty-foot right of way, it shows.
Yeah. We certainly don't need fifty feet to put a driveway.
Right. But you'd have to stake out the entire fifty-foot right of way to your lot.
For what purpose?
For access.
To show that, to.
That you're sure that you can get there.
So you want us to propose a driveway and either, are we at a crossroads of saying that like either we need to establish easement with legally, filed with the county for mountain mega realty, which is Sunflower's property?
Right.
Or go through.
Go through that fifty-foot right of way, which, as I said, it's, it's a controversial situation because no one, um, respected that right of way when they developed that. So the, the, the people's yards and stuff are in that right of way.
Yeah, well, it actually kind of forks around two different ways. So it's, it's like a giant right of way, it's like a, do not let it be tension off of it, and.
But the parking goes around those two developments, and that's why that can't loop around anymore, but, um.
Am I looking at the right thing here?
Uh. Did you sort of?
Yes.
I mean, it's too often, but if you stake out the right of way and see if it's physically there. Or, you know, try to get, get a permanent easement from the houses or.
Where's the evidence?
This.
The right of way is kind of at all, it's kind of on there.
That's okay.
So it's. Yeah. Uh, sorry. Well, we weren't proposing it, so it's, it's kind of zoomed out from it, this is part of it. So this is, this is fifty feet, and it goes around in kind of a U shape, and then it connects to, um, in the back here.
Some back there, maybe.
Yeah.
Some back there.
The way my, the way my, um, the way my cursor is moving on the screen, is that?
Can you show me?
But if they actually bring up the, the county parts of you or.
No, it is, it's that, that kind of L shape.
And then down.
Some part that's, that's cut off from, from the site plan, because it's not part of what.
Or is it this down here?
Uh-huh.
And where does it go?
I, well, this is two copies of the same thing, so it's like this, and then it goes off to the road.
It was nice to be able to see it.
But you're, if you look at the.
They purposely left it off because they don't.
You know, it's.
Part of the word that I had, that I just got, I looked at, and it doesn't look like it's any of this. And that's puzzling to me, it looks like it's on Wixom Road. So what came with it?
So that it's now came in, that packet was not the right.
Exactly. Yeah. But. All I know is it came in the same packet from Melissa, and I didn't think it was right, but it said Weber on it, there it is. If it's not that one, then I have to go look for the other packet, I don't know which packets.
It's not really showing any of the drawings that we proposed because we weren't proposing using it previously.
It certainly is shot on two point O. We have a, sorry, I'm a little discouraged by the beginning of this minute, but. It through, um, the, the top right of the, of two point O shows a zoomed out version of this one.
Well, two.
That's true, it's fifty foot.
That one.
The, the second page in your packet, right above that.
In the application within D markups, I mean, it's kind of a bunch of stuff here, and I don't know what it's for.
I'll go ahead and open the first one, submission one. So that, and then second page.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, and then, so right, you zoom in right there. See the red line is the property, and then it's, it's still cut off.
So okay, this is where two twelve connects to it.
Whereas the parking was yours, too, so you're not gonna actually see it.
It doesn't connect to two twelve, it connects to the, um. Do you read on that?
Is it difficult to do that, to get? Some permanent easement through the parking lot?
I've never heard such a thing.
This is, this is the, the, that's Sunflower.
That's Sunflower, and then, and then.
So you have this little.
Her client's property is outlined in red.
Yeah.
And then the, the right of way is, is to the north, that you can't go through. Not with a vehicle, no.
It's a ten-foot wide, it's a ten-foot wide access.
It's a drive, it's a roadway.
Which I think that's your proposing trail, right?
And where does the right of way connect?
Well, I'll talk about that in a second, and I'm trying, maybe we should just actually jump to that, because that's. So one of the other, um, to-do items that we left with last time was to figure out what was going on with Rocco. Um, it was a little vague, so we contacted them, we looked through all of cloud maps, and what it turns out to be is there's a footpath which shown, which is shown on our drawings. And, but there was a, a right of way for the footpath that's not at all on our property. It's actually between the edge of our property and the backyard of Sunflower. So that was supposed to go kind of a little bit more, um, in a different position than it currently is.
So what, what, what do you want to say about it? Because that, that was a key issue in the whole Rocco application with it, because the whole point was affordable housing, and therefore people didn't need cars, they could walk to town, and this path is part of their proposal.
Totally.
I have a, I think there's.
Yeah, I think there's bigger fish, or I think what happened is that, is that that path was, was just walked and encroaches on our property. So that's, that's the reality, is that there is no easement, there is no, um, current, uh, agreement to have the public on, on our client's property. Um, it's just to the, um, east of our, is where folks have a, have a ten-foot easement, um, that was given by, at the time, not you, realty to Rocco. Um, the fact that it actually, like, is on our property is a happenstance. We're more than happy to work through it and provide the amount of pedestrian access and naturally correctly, um, bring it all the way to Mill Hill Road so that folks aren't, are, rent their bikes through the path of the road for it. That's, we're more than happy to do this, but if we're talking about not having, not having a special file. Because the first time, yeah, the first time we met, five months ago, by the way, we completely paused planning for five months. We had submitted to, so I just want everybody to take that into my consideration in a real world situation, commercial property, um, commercial, uh.
That the commercial project falls for five months, I mean, it's like a little under.
And the reason, the reason it paused is because we were waiting for D E C. Um, and I just want to remind the board that we had a word submitted to D E C by the time we had met with you all, and we, we submitted to them in February. And, um, I email the D E C every week for six months, and this is the best time that they can give us. And so to come into the, to the project and be like, okay, we've got that done, but then there's this other. I, you know, I, I think that, I think that our patience and our, you know, our planning needs a little bit more concrete here, because when we decided, when we discussed this in April with everybody, uh, I think it was generally agreed that we don't want to access that commercial property from the residential neighborhood, even though it is our right of way, and we'll survey it, survey it, we'll delay the project however much that time that takes. And we'll do our due diligence, and we'll find a way to make it work, because this property has to have access, vehicular access somewhere, it can't completely block. There's a ten-foot right of way from, I mean, not a ten-foot, I mean, this, this, the property shape is ridiculous, it's called the bow tie. Um, the ten-foot swath that connects Mill Hill is not wide enough to actually have pedestrian traffic. And there had been previous.
There is no traffic.
Excuse me, previous traffic. There have been previous parking lots, um, proposed on our property that the planning board had, that did allow for parking access from Sunflower. Um, I think that we are fully. But if it's just a matter of access, I think we can fully get that, if it's a matter of parking, we can fully get that. But what we're asking is for the full engagement of this site plan review and make that a condition of our approval, because, um, we really have to get further along in this review process before this, we were starting to buy the reality of this project.
Let me just remind you one thing that is quite right about the access to the house that you're talking about. They own both of the property, so they had their own access.
Previously.
Previously, they own the properties on both sides. But now that they sold the property.
Well, but what was previously approved wasn't actually built out, and that was access between Sunflower parking lot and our parcel. And that was just never.
And, and just because they were continuously owned doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, if that was the case, that they should never have been able to sell the property. And, you know, in a way, right, because how could you, how could you?
Yeah, because it doesn't have access, unless it's through the.
Well, because it, it goes in order to increase the for right of way.
Right, which goes through a residential neighborhood, and to get to a, you have to go through a residential neighborhood to get to a commercial property, which, um.
I mean, it's unfortunate.
Again, they're more than willing to.
That's the side room going up that way.
Right, oh, I mean, we'll do it, I mean, it's kind of seems like the obvious thing, but it's, it's like, in terms of environmental impact and impact on the, on the, on just adjacent neighborhood, it's, it's unfortunate. So, I mean, I, I'll tell you right now, I don't think we're gonna be able to get a legal easement with, um, with the Sunflower property. I mean, that's, um, you know, well, we can.
Why, now that conversation.
Well, and, 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 and just to remind you, that we, we used that whole Sunflower property many, many, many times.
Yeah.
And parking was always the issue, so we, we, for every parking spot there goes the one or two, one or two.
I mean, I'll tell you this, they've been enormously cooperative in spirit, and, um, I think everybody is on board with the concept of us sharing parking and access from dumpsters and all the yuck that's going on behind the building, like.
Yeah.
Our, our clients and those guys, they wanna clean it up, and they wanna make it nice, and they don't want to create a road through backyards of these adjacent, um, residences. But if it's, if we're at a crossroads of being able to say, we're, we have to get a, a legal easement and file that, I, I don't know what that means.
Well, it seems like there's a solution, right? If, if Sunflower sells, uh, to somebody who doesn't want them to share access to their parking lot, then they, then they use the easement. But they shouldn't have to do the easement now, also you know that, um. I mean, we're actually, exactly. You know that you can buy parking spots.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and it just crashed something before, we are providing nineteen spaces on our property, so it's not just fully.
So if you buy the parking spots, then the practical matter is people are likely to park on the Sunflower parking place.
It's very true.
But you've got legal parking spaces, they're just not there, they're wherever they like to find something on the street or in the town parking lot.
Right.
And we're providing, just for the clue, we're providing nineteen, uh, the math is, the math is required for twenty. So we are nine spaces short, and we're proposing seven, sharing seventeen spaces with Sunflower to have more than their parking. But we're totally, like we discussed five months ago, which I know was a long time ago, that we're totally willing to pay those, those, buy those parking spaces, those off-street parking spaces.
Would you hand any parking spaces on your own property?
They were nineteen.
They're not, they're nineteen that are gonna go somewhere in that.
Right, and that was what we, what we've been working through the last five months with D E C.
With D E C, yeah, my map.
Essentially, that. I mean.
And Sunflowers inside the.
It was never, it was never a matter of the buildings, the buildings outside were buffer. It was only a matter of the parking, that we spent the last five months dealing with D E C and now it's, um, you know.
I also want to, I'd also want to verify that the D E C had no issues with it. We're approaching on the actual element or personal experience with the actual element, this was an adjacent buffer.
I'm just putting this up, I agree with you.
Yes, I would like to.
That's what my map says, wetland.
Sorry, I'm.
I'm just putting it up in your.
Yeah, so we had, we, we had that, we had that mapped by a biologist, he surveyed, and so that's.
And that's how you do it.
Yes, that's how you do it.
And it reminds me, it says.
That was six months before we even met you guys, we already started that process.
So I'm not worried about that, I'm just, I'm used to how.
I'd like the wording, um. I'm looking at this, um. And I hear everything you're saying, and I hear everything you're saying without the frustration. I'm having a hard time really conceptualizing. I, I'm, as somebody who used to rent space in the Sun, in the Sunflower area, um. And you know how, um, how things work there, um, and somebody who is a Woodstock resident and know what it's like to have, um, things that you don't necessarily want in your neighborhood. Um, so when I look at this without looking at a site plan or making a site plan visit, um, I'm really not seeing it, because I hear about the road and the right of way, and I also hear about the using this parking spots and buying with parking spots. But what, my thing is, what's the real impact besides the D E C saying that you can use the wetland? What does this really look like? This is an existing building already?
Yes. The true.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it is a existing building.
It is, that's existing, yeah.
Exactly, that's, yeah, so that's something that, you know, I think it's, it's worth of, of, you know, we're sitting here reviewing, and I don't know if that's.
I would say we've also provided, we've also provided petitions.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that's, I'm a gay person, I don't see that, I see.
What is, what is your question?
Yeah, what's, yeah, yeah, what's the question?
Well, the question is, is that how this really looks with the parking lot, with going and walking through the, the, the land and the access area?
What do you mean, it really looks like?
Like what is it, what is it, what does it look like, what, what does it actually? Are you looking for rendering?
You're looking for, I'm talking about aesthetics or?
I mean, like I'm at. No, 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 I'm talking about just access, okay?
That, that, we have this.
And this is coming in from our.
It's not, it's like, nothing, it's.
There's a next to. And that's the parking lot for the grocery store, that, um.
So is this the whole area that's never burned, and when you're doing that all the way up to those residences and you're walking through that?
It's where her sign is, right now.
Where, where is it?
Uh, Kristen's sign, she has a sign there.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's.
So that's Kedham Berlin Farms, so that's what we're doing.
This is the end of the, the grocery store parking lot.
Okay. Okay.
And that's just part of our, that's our, that's our property.
Physically, it's part of a parking lot, but legally it's your walkway.
There's a ten-foot wide swath of land, and our sign is on it, that's a good marker of where it is, and it's, you know.
There's grass between the.
So this is Cumberland Farms.
Okay, it's grass right now, it, you.
There's grass between Cumberland Farms and Sunflower, and it's, it's not really noticeable. You wouldn't look at it and, and say, oh, that's a ten-foot swath of land leading to the back lot. It looks like, you know.
Right, but legally, if you wanted to turn it into a sidewalk, you could.
And that's what we're doing now, because people can just walk at the water.
So it's, we're proposing. So, so, the technical issue is that you have this ten-foot access. There, there's nothing, there's nothing that codes that says you can't have a, a, a business with the ten-foot access, you can have that.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's not a problem, and you can bike parking, you know, in the cloud. Um, the issue is gonna be trying to get parking spaces away from Sunflower, because we've already got a site plan for Sunflower that accommodates every single parking space for their visits.
So, so, so make it a loa.
Well, they have to come back before us and revise their, their car site.
No, 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 I'm saying there's, there's in lieu fees, there's parking lieu fees in your code.
Yeah, what I'm saying, that, if, if there's four, there's four businesses in that, in that, and we allow parking on top of parking, saying that some places will do visits at different hours than others. So we've accommodated for every parking space, which even they know is all used by people, tourists that don't even go to those stores, they just park.
But I mean, we're, we're not pushing back on the in lieu of fees. We said that in the first meeting.
They did, they said they were wanting to pay them.
If we need to pay for twenty, twenty-nine spaces.
If I'm, if I'm, I think the practical question is, when you're doing the work, the business that you intend to do, is it at a time when there are likely to be spaces there that can be used, in practical terms? Because, yeah, you can buy spaces, but if there's no place to park, because it's full.
You might think. We, we did, and I, and I also, what we talked about last time was, I would be happy to put a trail camera on that parking lot and, and show you when it's used and when it's not used. I'm also happy to just roll over and say, we're gonna provide the spaces that we proposed in our back lot, and we'll pay the in lieu of fees for the additional spaces, and we won't on the bucks use Sunflowers spaces at all.
Okay, so what, what we need to do at this point, if you want to use the Sunflower parking space and Sunflower access, we gotta bring Sunflower back in front of us, uh, make that adjustment. And if that's fine with Sunflower, it's fine.
Well, so I think I, I'm confused because, um, I certainly, I don't think it. My initial reaction is I don't wanna get into an amendment of, of that property, I don't wanna get into an easement with that property. I'd rather build out the back right of way through the other neighborhood, but I think it's more beneficial to the town for us to be cooperative and to come through Sunflower. So I think we gotta get through that discussion and say like, like, you know, that if we build this music venue that we're allowed to build, that even if we pay a million in lieu of spaces fees, and we have a giant parking lot somewhere else, that people are gonna park in Sunflower at the off-hours, and that's gonna be the reality. Because it's the most convenient and.
Yeah, we, we agree with that.
Right, so it's like, like, I think, you know, I, I'd like to get past that, because I mean, the bigger issue would be.
Well, we, we actually agree that, that that's the way the parking lot works, but for us to make this, for you, we have to have an agreement from Sunflower that we can do that.
So let's talk about, let's talk about the, the logistics of what that would look like, and what, what would be, what y'all would accept.
Well, at this point, you really need to hire a land use attorney, because you're asking us to make legal decisions, which not really our choice. I can't tell Sunflower that they gotta do it.
What would a land use attorney, what would a land use attorney tell you?
Tell you how to get, to get it organized, to get it prepared, to, to get an agreement with Sunflower, it's not even Sunflower, it's with the corporation, but, you know, it all is that.
I would, I totally, totally understood, I think where our frustrations lie, is that we paused this project for five months for D E C review. The board did not have any interest at all to review our project until D E C came in. That was what the minutes showed, that's what happened.
That's stupid.
So, you know, we worked with other municipalities and had different entities, but that's fine. But for that five-month period, um, that's, this, this project has been an old one. And so what we're looking for is for technical review to start, so that we can actually get to a reality of what you need for site plan review. Um, I, I think that, that, that these, these.
Well, access, that's what we need, is to be active.
What do you mean by technical review?
Technical review of the project, I mean, Lance, you've been lighting, uh, disturbing.
Well, we, we need access, we need access.
Can we, can we establish seeker? Can, can we classify seekers now?
You're asking us to approve parking and access on somebody else's property.
No, I'm asking you to establish seeker and classify the project.
And to make it make it.
Peter, I don't intend that to be the only way to look at this, I think what she's talking about, but I wanna see if I can say it.
Please.
To put nine spaces on that back part of your parking, nineteen, nineteen, okay, on that back part of that parking. And to pay in lieu of for the rest of what you need for accommodating the space they need.
Correct, and not include sunflower.
And not legally, sunflower is invisible.
Correct.
In practice, people are gonna be on sunflower, so we would want to know that you're gonna be using it at a time when it's likely to have space in it. But if it doesn't, then people are gonna have to walk from wherever they can find a space.
This is hotels.
There was a nightclub.
Which is the reality of how.
And still, it still doesn't have any park.
It's a, but I'm saying what's wrong with that law?
Cause next next time.
They they build their nineteen and they get in lieu for the rest, and if there's space at sunflower, there isn't, if there isn't, there isn't. What's wrong with that legally?
No, as long as you're not involving sunflower, then it's fine.
It's the access.
In practice, people are gonna mark.
But what we know that they're gonna park there.
Oh, but in terms of the definition of that of parking availability for their project. They've got the nineteen on my property and they've paid in lieu for everything else, my neighborhood else in town that doesn't have my property.
I agree, uh like still be there for.
So.
The issue.
Why can't I just then agree, I mean, I think I hear this come to an agreement, I think.
Well, that's the question, you know, the route, but to the parking.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Well.
So that's the next question.
And and that's the review, there are gonna be issues. And so, I mean.
Yeah, that's what you should, I agree.
We're more than happy to provide, I mean, that's.
Where are these, we've got a wish.
Trouble here?
We should be encouraging this kind of overlap, we shouldn't be paving over the village, we should be encouraging this thing. Um.
To the extent that it's usable, if the timing works in practical terms, it's no harm to it, but I think.
I agree, I I also believe legally, that's the word, that we can accept that fifty-foot right-of-way as access even if they are reused.
Right.
This is.
That remains the.
Yes, exactly, that's.
That was already said.
That's reasonable, that's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
So they've got access to the property.
And that kind of does, I mean, it was already established, that's not the, right, the site plan is the building.
Uh.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest anything illegal, and I don't think they are. I think this is a legal way to define this thing, so that it works, and if in fact, you know, if the overlap with sunflower. Is conflicting because there's just not enough parking, sunflower is gonna complain to somebody, probably you.
Put a. Hundred percent, put a condition in, however you wanna word it, that that, you know, if if something happens and it has to be built out, I mean, that's.
Well, I just, I don't even think it would need a condition, because if you're starting out with nineteen spaces on, and you pay a lease of the nine, where's your twenty?
Right, but sun.
Now, nine is actually not that many.
I know, absolutely, like if that that.
I just wanna be clear that I don't think it's a reality to establish an easement between these two properties.
No, what I'm talking about, thank you.
No, I gotta take it for.
We are talk, we're talking about you can do the kind of parking you can do if you build a nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
You you will be good legally for the parking.
We're trying to get visual lines on that.
You've got, you've got a right way to ever need it.
Yeah.
For building access to the side street.
For the board's purpose of safety, yes.
And I don't, frankly, I don't see a problem with it.
All right, let's go with it.
Okay, so they were approved by D E C, so the landscaping was twenty, but we can jump to that.
So. It's.
Yeah. Yeah.
You guys agree?
Our table.
I work for. Yeah, because there's always a solution, uh if they can't use the sunflower, uh people are saying whatever, we're.
I mean, I parked at sunflower at night to watch the the fireworks, there's not much going on in the evening.
Oh, it's dead in the evening, when I do your visual notes.
Now, what your time is, you know, whether that overlap is works, I don't know.
In reality, it's gonna be a project where I mean, every time I come through here, it's, I know you've had this one experience, I have.
You're talking about, you're talking about a night, a venue that's a night venue?
Correct, I mean, the, you know, when it's when it's at maximum capacity, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an hour's sunflower, it's not, not in peak operation.
I I just don't see no, that's the problem.
Well, I think.
Okay, so towards the balance, one for experiment, those, we're gonna prove that based on the D E C.
That I think, that's.
You should read D E C, the D E C gave.
They say it's okay, but it's okay.
Yeah, we back it up in conjunction with.
Zero point one four eight two hundred foot.
Yes.
Up in the park, so that's the weather of course for us.
Yes.
So, um.
So do you believe that they need to go to C C D?
From the side of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess you gotta do it this way, this.
Do you wanna say thank, thank, thank?
Yeah, we got, we've got them on our hands, so that's enough.
Person. Okay, so we've got. We have continuing your review.
Yes.
We are continuing your review.
Yes.
You guys got your D E C permit, congratulations, okay, we we discussed access, we discussed parking, we know where we're heading, so you can continue withdrawing on that.
Thank you.
Mister David Ekroff is the Chair of Commission Pacific Design, if we're done, right, then come back to us, we'll talk about what the review is. And we're gonna keep moving forward and we'll probably have a public hearing soon.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we can we establish secret classification for the project?
We don't have to do secret.
Do you, what 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 class do you think I did? So then it stops at type two.
Well, I would classify it as type two.
Board members, do you wanna classify, yes, I didn't look.
I mean, you're not over.
And I trust you.
What is it, a hundred thousand board sheet, whatever.
Yeah.
It's very secret. Fair secret.
So as we all know, with seeker, as a type two action. Review ends at this point, and we do all agree that it is not environmentally harming that area, they are just better met for review.
And the matrix for the county? Was within five hundred feet.
Oh, because she told me.
But I forgot how that matrix went, now they changed it. They changed it because it doesn't.
All right, how about we both look into whether or not we can have board plan, how we plan to submit for choose your head. See, she knows, see, okay, so give the Commission Pacific Design, and then when you come back, I will work on submitting to the county for the refer.
So the building, the so.
That's C C D, it says aesthetics.
C C D is going to review the aesthetics of the building.
So really, yes.
They're they're not gonna review the rest of the site plan.
Nope. Just how it fits into the into the test.
Color.
So I would suggest.
Wow, they do the.
And look.
Do you want me to submit it to the county?
No, I don't.
I would, I would suggest that you submit to the county.
Done.
Thank you.
It takes me a little bit to do it, but I will do it to your honor, and then we get that, yes.
Is that because they?
So we're best tracking it as my.
Yes, I mean, because this is clearly gonna be a matter of concern because it's really not even connected to the county rep, thank you.
Done. Or it's gonna make a motion that this is definitely a type two seeker, and we are going to submit to the county and then be referred to C C D and we'll come back. To discuss and discuss in public, okay.
And and so who's gonna kinda take the lead on on landscaping, lighting, I I understand the aesthetics of the building is primarily what we're gonna review with.
That's a big question.
Does zero C C D looks at that?
Let's see what they do.
Mine think they do, lighting is really us, but.
Yeah, but you guys had plans, I mean, you can.
We don't, we have plans.
No, 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 like really seriously, like, it wasn't really a major conversation because you had this stuff within your plans that you had planned on doing.
Yes. Hundred percent.
You, I mean, you you were planning on cleaning up, like, they heard that, they they're good, they're supportive.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna work that out with C C D and then.
Hi, if you're the one that I would meet through C C D.
Okay.
I'm going to email him and then we'll we'll, yes, we'll take care of it all.
Just don't say it's like.
Sometimes. Sometimes they add it to our, right, sometimes they add the plant sets, but you know, I can figure that out, I can grab them from the other one under.
Yeah.
They will be very much happier with us than with you if we consult.
Okay, yes.
It makes everything nicer.
Do you have any other, somebody adds like a new stall or something?
No.
I'm just saying.
Come in.
You're happy, okay.
I think this is your, this is your.
This is mine.
Makes everything nicer.
Yeah.
Keep me around, please.
Yeah, C C D.
Do you guys have any other questions?
I don't know who we can get.
Zach, come on, will you?
That's right.
Do I, do you have, do you have any other consultants, you have a?
They did not ask me for none, so no.
Okay.
Do you need anyone with this?
I'm just, I don't have enough of a background to really apply.
There would have been a big company, you know, and so, but we deal with.
And so, that's.
Exactly, you've been here since.
That's true.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for us, so right now.
It's much better if they don't have to use that piece of.
Yeah, I agree, but it's, yeah.
You guys did the right thing coming before us and having like, oh, look at this, I mean, and and Bush too with the back and forth, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
You you went through a lot of that before you even sat here, and I know this is an issue, it's tough, we're the town that needs parking, and it's it's really tough, and then in lieu of fee, it is really in the cloud, imagine your parking.
Yeah.
Which they think about in private every day because they're residents. But.
Okay.
But we do know that that parking lot is largely.
Absolutely.
The deserted after, but what time do they close, they've caused.
Yeah. And we know human nature, they're gonna park there no matter what we do.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, true.
Okay.
But if you've got nineteen already, that's your land.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of what you need.
So if you didn't have me on speed dial, you will now.
All right, thank you, folks.
Okay.
Guys. Peter, come on.
Ah, here we go. Okay, we have a sketchway review for Mountain Pools, two fifty seven C C D Valley Oil City, sketchway review for twenty-five, yeah, zero one nine.
Yeah, it was, it was in the wrong folder, and so I wanna look at that, what the hell is Sixth Avenue, that can't be, this is yours, Sixth Avenue.
So this is a site plan review to modify an existing site with a fence patio and shed. So um you do have a plan of some sort that you wanna.
Um sure, uh I didn't make a bunch of copies of that.
I'll put it up.
So, but it's it's pretty straightforward, there's a, there's a little patio uh coming off the building, so that was a air shed. So here's the existing building, um proposing to push shed behind the building, this is Tinker Street, this is Dixon.
I feel a car, by the way, I see you have like barriers.
Yes.
They call them grass?
No, 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 so the the barriers um open up, and so Mountain Pools used to do a retail.
Right.
Business, where you come in by chemicals, um I decided that uh it it's more of a distraction, our primary business is people. Helping build their homes, but people's, we've been doing that for forty-five years, so to break people's habit of coming in, I put up these these barriers. But yet they they they, there's two that have water in them that are very heavy, that means it's gonna move, and there's two that have no water, and so we just kind of open and close them. Gates when the the office staff parks in the front of these spaces.
Which which of the electronic parts that I got is this, cause I think this is mixed up with the other.
Called site plan.
It's called site plan?
But so, so the shed is new.
I agree, no, that that's just a.
So there's, there's barriers, or they're covered, just wants people to know that they can't find them. What I wanted to do originally was to tear it all, think, I don't, and rebuild, but uh because it's residential zones, um and it already has been. At its twenty-five percent expansion, that that's off the table, so now I'm trying to find ways to better just the space that.
Yes. He did already go over the Z G A from those.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
But yes, I, this parking lot is 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 very um challenging, it's not a good design, but it's what I have.
So.
What you have.
We have our bits too, that.
Yep, yep, so yep, the shop is just this little thing, there's the parking in the front, and then there's this kind of yard in the back. And so I'm looking to build a patio to have outdoor space to um have like team meetings or meetings with customers and do training, right? And then this little shed is, I'll use it for storage to allow me to take stuff out of the store so I can build another. Uh a bathroom that's like appropriately sized and not where everyone is sitting and.
What's the business?
Whole kitchenette.
Mountain Pool.
It's a pool, it's a pool business.
Okay.
Um so I'm just trying to pull stuff out of the shop to better use the space in size, since I can't expand that space anymore.
I think the first question, you be able to set back on the property setback.
Yep, so uh yeah, it 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 does.
Yes.
Yeah, I can get a variant, no.
No, no, I was told that.
Well, that's a question for Bush, right?
I was.
We already, yes, there, that one is settled before it backs you.
I I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, so respects the setbacks.
So.
So it's here.
I was gonna have a review because it's a commercial.
And it has previous site plan.
It's a site plan, yeah.
Yes, and this had one in place for Mountain Pool, so this is enough to prompt that it needs to be in hand.
Well, if if what if what's the over, the setbacks are good, and what about uh occupying the space, are we within the limits there?
Absolutely within limits, yes. The one I can't use.
Cause there's a code, you know, you can only occupy so much space of the lot.
And I can't.
Yeah. It's a vote.
Sensing, yeah.
All right, board members, uh what do you think?
Yeah.
Wait for a review?
Make a motion, do we?
I'm moving wait for a review.
On the favor.
Is it a second?
I have a second.
All right.
Oh, okay. All right.
Uh the board will prepare a motion next meeting, which is uh the, no, for sixteen, and then we'll, we'll just close up and final offer, and we'll sign plans and we'll be back for the meeting.
Wonderful, all right.
Thanks for coming in here.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you. I don't want parking spaces.
No parking in the pool.
Oh, and put that on the deck.
Don't hate them.
Our next meeting is the six, sixteen, yes.
Sixteen.
Wait, where are we at?
We're in the middle of this month.
We are at the eight, the eight house today.
Oh. Yeah, but I think we're on sixteen.
I think we're done for this month.
Yeah, I don't see you guys again until the sixteen.
Sixteen, the next one.
October sixteen, because we took off for the.
Right. Oh, we took off for Ro- for Russia, for young.
Yes, so our next meeting is October sixteen.
All right.
Uh we technically young was over by then.
Yeah, so I want everyone here on my day? That's why we did it that way, yes, um.
All right.
Anything else, okay, I don't think so, good job, I know this is difficult.
Yeah, good evening, so I think that's something to say, uh I'm I'm gonna, I'm the architect for a large project in town that I have to excuse myself for, and. I think they'll, it'll be a, it'll be here a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So, do we have enough people?
If everybody comes who's supposed to come, we need four for it.
I I really.
You 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 can be a committee, yeah, you have to push yourself to the act of things, that's.
Maybe just can't help.
I understand.
You can't, you can't put in opinions or.
The most.
That's right, no yelling in the back of the room.
We're back. Yes.
But sometimes, sometimes it's hard to get a forum, I just wanna, are you worried about that at all?
Yeah, okay.
Melissa will figure it out.
Okay.
But most of the time, when anything else is being discussed, you can be forever meeting, and when we're talking about that case, you leave.
I understand.
And then you come back.
Yeah, I don't even think it's leave, I think shot off.
Well, people follow it.
Like we make a whole shift.
That's what I said, he usually go to the back of the room and yell.
He can.
No, it's.
What what we did with meters, I just like put that side of the table, and we literally limited say like, Brandon is refusing himself in this case, and then and we will.
No.
You and I will stay in touch about it also and just make sure that it's formed and, yes, and thank you for being ethical.
All right.
We we do need to get James or John, preferably both of them, to be here.
Yes.
But that's it.
And I think we're, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, we hope it could.
You're wrong.
There are other projects, so.
And I think we really ought to recruit another member, we are, we are just too thin.
I think.
Somebody smarter than you.
I think we have to get through and go to a lawyer before we start them.
I mean, yes, you do.
Do I want Joseph?
He's a, he could be a candidate.
Would you want it?
Yeah, probably.
We've definitely talked about that.
Absolutely. You're you're associate, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think as well, you know, architects and people with engineering background and people like that are always a plus in this.
Do you hear what I'm saying, that I think we should hold out for this year?
Um, yes.
Okay.
No, I understand the way.
Okay, adjourn me, please. Peter, end the meeting for me.
All right, both do adjourn.
So this has.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful.
Wow, okay.